All rise.
I publicly wish to declare, out of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. First thing is visitors and public comment. Sir, please identify yourself.
My name is Ken Kilpatrick, and I'm a community relations director for the Mobile Home Park. And I'm here to respectfully address the board about the letter that we received for the scheduled meeting on Thursday. It is our intention, our desire, to actively participate in this meeting, to have this conversation with the township and those who are involved. I got it on Monday, and I've been scheduled, and I need to be at this meeting to have this conversation. I'm scheduled to be outside of Reading for a 2:30 meeting. That meeting is going to go on for a while. I cannot be there, so be here for the meeting. I'm going to ask for two things. One, I'm going to ask the board to kindly consider rescheduling that meeting shortly after Thanksgiving. I'm not asking for, you know, a prolonged period of time, so we can, you know, work our schedule together and have this meeting. Also, I'd like the opportunity, for me and possibly somebody else from the company, to meet with the supervisors as well, and have a conversation about our relationship as a business with this township, with the government. I think there are misunderstandings on both sides, misconceptions about each other, and for whatever reason, for different communications, lack of communications in the past, whatever has happened. And just to have a frank conversation with a sincere desire to put those things out on the table, so we can look at honestly moving forward together and coexisting, not just now, but in the long term. So those are the two things that I'm asking the board, or the council, to please consider, if we could do that.
Thanks for coming tonight, Mr. Kilpatrick. I got the heads up that you were going to make this request, and we did look into the possibility of perhaps moving that meeting, but too many people are notified now, and many of these residents are old and infirm, and we won't be able to reach them with another date. In addition, we have folks coming from Senator McElhany's office, and Department of Environmental Protection, and Bucks County Health Department, and they're already booked. So it would be a lot to move it. We're certainly going to note your intention to participate, and we do welcome you to come to this boardroom and discuss openly, and we can have that frank and open discussion, at a special meeting of the board, or at our next regularly scheduled meeting. We won't meet with you in any other forum but in a public forum, so, just so you know that. But for now, this meeting is going to take place on Thursday at 4 o'clock here. Hopefully, you can send some other representative from your organization. I know your council's local, and we'd love to have you. And I think, were you here at the meeting last week, or two weeks ago?
That's correct.
Yeah, so you know what the issues are. And it's going to be more of that, but with the DEP, and Senator McElhany, and those folks involved. I promise you, no decisions are going to be made. We're just going to have some issues out in the open, discussed, and some facts actually, you know, brought out. And then, if you have a representative here, you'll know what it's about. We'll do our best to clue you in on the points of the discussion. And then we'll invite you back, and we could possibly host another meeting, depending on what we need, okay?
I will try to get a representative, but that's asking someone to fill a position that a person, you know, is a position that I need to do. I know it may be an inconvenience, but four days' notice for us to be able to do this and change this is not fair. And, you know, I do lobbying work, too. This would not be a shock to the senator or the DEP. I've worked with all those folks to have to reschedule something. You know, yeah, I knew that the intent was to do this, but, you know, this was no notice. And again, you know, on our part, this is, there's nothing wrong going on over at the community, so whatever we need to do as far as maintenance issues is going to continue with or without this meeting. But the letter clearly said that the intent of the meeting is for everyone to talk about their part and what they're doing. If we're here, we can't do that. And I can't go back to the company and say, you know, "Look, let's try to work for a relationship of trust moving forward," when the township is going to continue to have a meeting without us, without us being able to participate. We're still confused whether it's official or not official, whether, you know, the language last Saturday, or the other Saturday, was from somebody that was at that meeting, was that, you know, "I'm a resident in the community who happens to be a supervisor. That person's not here." But, you know, so it's really confusing. I think that it would be in the best interest in the long term, because I think you're going to see these things happen over and over again. Look, you know, a light bulb goes out, and an elected official gets called. Sometimes it's that bad. And I think that if we could have this time to have this conversation, you know, people have been met with who are saying things that aren't necessarily true without a public forum.
I understand.
So what I'm asking for is not anything different that's been granted to other people.
No, well, we understand, but unfortunately, we have to be mindful of our residents first. And I realize that you got late notice, but the meeting was thrown together quickly. And I'm not going to, we're not going to be able to reach all the 500-plus homes over there between now and Thursday to cancel the meeting. It's been duly advertised. Like I said, there's not going to be any action taken at this meeting, so we will keep you, we'll fully advise you as to what happened.
We do have the capacity ourselves to help you reach our residents in that time. Could have it done first thing in the morning. We often distribute notices, so I don't think it's going to be a problem for me to get that notice out, you know, as early as possible tomorrow, to let them know, you know, we're working with the township. Again, look, bottom line is, I'm not trying to stall. We're really serious about trying to do the right thing, to move forward in the right way. The maintenance issues are going to continue with or without this meeting, whether we ever give input or not. We're going to have to do what we have to do and do it the right way. But I think the relationship is extremely important, and that's why we want to do it the right way. We're asking you to reconsider that. So if we help distribute that message, would you consider? And again, right after Thanksgiving, it's just a scheduling thing. I do need to be here. I know Peter's going to have to be here. He's in Harrisburg, I believe.
I have no, I mean, I think it's important to have management there.
If you can reach everybody, then I'm okay with it.
Can we pick a date, so that in the, they know when, that why it's canceled, and pick another date so that we can settle?
Is that something that we could decide here? Should we talk first thing in the morning? I know first week of December, I back up in Reading on the 7th, but first?
I'm not prepared to pick a date right now. I don't think any of us are prepared to pick a date right now.
May I propose this? I'll be on the phone early with you tomorrow to confirm that, yes, we can get this letter, distribute it, and maybe if we need to find, and find out what date works for you. Or would you prefer us to say that, you know, a date is pending, and that we'll re-notify them again, probably within a day or two?
Yeah.
What works best?
That's probably the best thing to do. Let them know that it's postponed for tomorrow, because management wants to attend, and that a date will be, they'll know within a day or two when the new scheduled date is.
I would think that the letter you distribute ought to be signed by the township manager, so that the residents start calling here and asking if this is another, you know, management thing, that, you know, the township manager should sign the letter, so that
That's good, yeah.
people understand it's coming from here and not because you're trying to keep people away, so.
Okay.
And for the record, even though there may or may not be an official record on this issue, but I, we very much welcome your participation. This is, this community and the problems over there is not new to us. We've dealt with them, we dealt with them, same issues last year. And personally, I was involved with them for three or four years before that. So I'm glad to see that you're going to be here, and you fully intend to perform in this discussion, so thank you.
And appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much for this consideration. So Ms. Mason, I'll be in touch with you in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Joe? Walk faster, Joe.
Oh, you're young. I could actually start reading his stuff. A couple of weeks, Joe Paternastro-Halk wrote, "A couple of weeks ago, we had an interesting snowstorm, which turned heat off for about 3 million people. A lot of you don't realize it, but in my neighborhood, not only did we lose power, but just before we were losing it, we had a regular significant power surge. In my house, I saw a spark that looked like it was about six feet long, when it was only actually six inches, but it threw me for a loop. The surge was so large in our neighborhood that it burned out some of the electrical meters, which is rather significant. We have several elderly people in our neighborhood, and they had nowhere to go for over 40 hours. Now, as I see it, dogs have a place to go, but not people. Yesterday in the papers, it seemed that the Red Cross no longer supports the center in Bristol. I guess we can't count on them either. Why can't the township do something in emergencies of this type in order to perform, provide some comfort? Maybe you could get together with the borough, the YMCA, the Doylestown Hospital, to provide a temporary space for, like, the building in the back. The hospital has temporary space in that I was over at their old emergency room, and none of it is being used. The way I see it, if we can use space to dogs, we can certainly help the elderly a little bit more." Second point. Next month, you will be voting on the budget. I don't know at this point if the budget includes new taxes and/or cuts, but I would like to say the following. If the township residents give their, if some of the township residents give their ideas on how to save, whatever, $100 to $100,000, we may be able to save a large sum of money. And in order to start the ball-rolling, may I suggest you lay two township employees off. This would save about $75,000. Now, you probably won't do this, since you will lose votes, or you will feel bad, and hopefully, it's the latter. So rather than do this, and since we're having three new, so to speak, three new board members coming on board, why don't you drop the $75,000 in insurance premiums that the board now gets? Most of you, you have your own companies or are professionals. Besides, isn't it true that volunteers do what they do to help people, and are not in it for any rewards or perks? Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Sir?
Good evening, supervisors, Ms. Mason. David Bauer, Lower State Road. "In the last few weeks, I've received several mailers prior to the election, both parties focusing on the 41% tax increase. Last December, you had a few residents come before this board, whining and salivating for a 41% tax increase. One of those residents said, and I will quote her, 'I am fairly confident the employees have done their part to help this situation. I'm fairly confident that the supervisors have done their part to help this situation. The only segment of the community that hasn't been asked to help is the residents. What an insult to the taxpayers who are footing the bill for PPO family coverage at over $20,000 a year for one employee. And I'll tell you what PPO stands for: Pass, Payment, On to Taxpayers. I have a problem with and object to my taxes paying for non-employee health care. I am being told that two employees performing the same job, I'm to pay more for the employee with dependent care. So I suggest that maybe you could grandfather existing employees with health care, and new hires pay for dependent coverage. And you'll be amazed at how many of the new hires will flop to an HMO and not a PPO. I'd be curious if the board would have any comments on my remarks."
I have none. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Next item is a presentation from the Friends of the Doylestown Dog Park. Want to do something more?
Yep.
Well, good evening. I'm Kathy Brown. I'm co-chair of the Friends of the Doylestown Dog Park. And I have to say, I'm here with some, what we feel is very positive news, very good news. And I am starting with this slide, showing you, these are our goals. This is our third visit here. We have had these goals since we started our venture to build this dog park almost three years ago. And I'm proud to say that of these goals, we have reached every one of them, except to build or to establish the dog park. So in saying that, we are requesting approval to move forward to build the dog park. Now, I am going to demonstrate, or show you, the updates that we have done since our March presentation, and how and what we have done to reach the goals, and to show you that we are prepared to build the dog park. In the design, it's basically the same design as before. We have just changed the pavilion a little bit, changed the fence a little bit. The pavilion is now a hexagon, and we've moved the fence out to make the pavilion area a nicer area for events, fundraising events, things like that. That's the old one. This is the new one. So it basically looks the same, just a little difference in the pavilion and the size of the fencing. We're going to skip that. This is a closer look of the pavilion, and you can see, well, it's kind of hard to see, but you can see the, there's space for some landscaping, the fencing, the shape of the pavilion. So those are changes from before. And this, Judy Hendrickson, again, donated her talents to give us a visual of the dog park. Now, one of the goals, one of our major accomplishments, is that we have reached our budget goal. In that, in our design, we initially presented to you that we would build in three phases. As we worked on the design, we found that we needed to put components in phase three in phase one. And the good thing about this is, as our design changed, our fundraising increased. And I have to say, our fundraising was extremely successful, extremely successful. And in saying that, that demonstrates the community's support, and the desire, and the desire of the community to have this facility. It's hard to see, that is our updated budget. You should have a copy of it in your business plan. The bottom line of that is that we have reached our fundraising goal, and we have the money to pay for what we need to pay for to build the dog park. We also have, and again, you're going to hear me say it lots of times, it's the community's support. We have over $76,000 in donations, in in-kind donations, to build this park. The other part of it is cash on hand. So we have reached that goal. We've actually exceeded that goal. But, in saying that, that doesn't mean by any means that our fundraising stops, and we don't need more money as we move on. So our fundraising will continue. We had a very successful brick campaign. To date, we have sold, I believe, 75 bricks and five pavers. We will continue that. We will also expand that a little bit in where we have been advertising this, promoting this, as buy a brick, build the dog park. We're moving to memory bricks and bricks to honor, as opposed to, I mean, since we've already going, hopefully going to have the park built, we will add to honor dogs or people in the community. Our in-kind donations, once the park is built, if we want to improve, we will continue to ask for in-kind donations first, and then, if that doesn't work, we will go with our naming and dog park partners. Again, we have raised over $100,000 in the dog park partners program. Very successful fundraising, and we anticipate that that will continue. And we will also, our events, people look forward to our events, and we will continue at least two annual fundraising events. In this, we will be raising money to improve the park, and also make sure that the maintenance fund is there. But we also have other ways to ensure that as well. Future plans and support? This is important to me. I want not only the board of supervisors, but I want the public to understand why we did the registration the way we did, and our orientation and our access. Safety is the utmost concern. And in registration, we're requiring medical records for the dog and ownership information. Once someone registers and pays a registration fee, and that registration fee will go to the maintenance and operating fund for the dog park. So once that is paid, they will sign up for an orientation class. And that is something that's different from other dog parks. And we're doing this in a proactive way, in that we will have professional dog trainers facilitate the orientation. And we will explain and make sure people understand what is expected of them before they and their dog ever enter the dog park. So what we're doing here is explaining proper etiquette for the human as well as the dog. We are also going over good dog behavior and bad dog behavior. So what we're doing here is hoping that the registrants will understand and take ownership of the park. And in doing so, we will minimize the problems and maximize the enjoyment. Now, once the orientation is completed, the registrants will get an access key fob, so the only way to enter the park is with the key fob. Now, dog park management. It is, and has always been, the Friends of the Doylestown Dog Park's plan to raise all the funds needed to build this park, maintain this park. And once that is done, dedicate the park to the Doylestown Township. In doing that, we will have our $10,000 escrow maintenance fund. All the registration fees go to replenish this maintenance fund. And the township will operate and maintain the dog park, just like any other park in the park system. All right? That's our plan. Now, one of the new things in the update is an advisory board. And we want to do this to help with the oversight and the insight, or for the future of the dog park. And it will be borough and township residents, members from the Friends of the Doylestown Dog Park, that someone from the township staff, and a board of supervisors liaison. The advisory board will work with, and this is what we propose, the advisory board will work with the park and recreation, with the board of supervisors, and with the Friends of the Doylestown Dog Park. Ultimately, the Friends of the Doylestown Dog Park will continue working with the township, but will raise funds for the maintenance and the improvement of the park. We will also work, when needed, to improve the park. So the Friends of the Doylestown Dog Park will still be involved, but the township will have the operation and maintenance of the park. I want to say that we are very proud of our efforts, and we've worked hard, but it's been very, very rewarding to be a part of something that is so community-based. And in these times, I am very proud to say that we have done what we've needed to do, and we have the funds needed to build this park. We've done our part, and we're asking the board of supervisors to let us move on and build the park.
Thanks, Kathy. And thank you, committee. You guys indeed did what you said you were going to do. You've done a great job. And let me just say, behind the scenes, and a lot of this stuff gets done behind the scenes, we worked with the, with your representatives, with Kathy Brown. Kathy worked with Karen Sweeney, our park and rec director, Dick John, Stephanie Mason, myself. The solicitor and I worked on the agreement, in draft form. All the supervisors have a copy of this agreement, which would be the operation agreement between the Friends of Dog Park and Doylestown Township. It lays out the responsibilities of the dog park, Friends of Dog Park, and Doylestown Township. Doylestown Township will have oversight. We are the municipality in which the dog park is situated, and we are responsible. It is part of our park land, subject to, of course, the lease with the county. So we're fiscally responsible, we're reliably responsible, and it is our maintenance department that is going to be in charge of it. The fees that are going to be collected, membership fees, there's some details that have to be worked out about that, charging residents, non-residents, who are residents, who aren't, who are not residents. Kathy, just to amend, one thing Kathy did say is that the fees collected will go for the maintenance and all the costs associated with it, including administration, financial and operation costs. But all the, if, whatever fees are not going for those costs will be separated out for improvement costs for the dog park, in accordance with the advisory board's recommendation. Now, the advisory board, as Kathy said, is going to be made up of representatives from the dog park, and from Doylestown Township, and a liaison supervisor, and our staff. This will have, this group of folks will be having an advisory capacity. They will be looking to see what changes need to be made, what improvements need to be made, where there are any glitches in the system, and make recommendations to who's ever in charge, typically, typically us, maybe just the director or the operations manager. So, you know, that bit of business is very important. You've got to build it, but then you've got to operate and have an understanding as to how that all gets done. You guys worked very well in making that happen, and this is just a draft, this agreement. There's, like I said, it needs to be worked on, and this is your operating agreement and your presentation. I think it's very well done, and I would make the motion that we give the Friends of Dog Park the go-ahead. Second?
I would just like to say I commend your group for doing everything we've asked of you to do.
Thank you.
Not put any burden on our taxpayers. You raised all the funds yourself to provide this, the maintenance, the insurance, the whole nine yards. And I think this was a great, I read this thing entirely, and was very impressed with what you have accomplished.
Thank you.
And I'd certainly support this wholeheartedly.
Good. I see some comment, questions, hands? Mr. O'Malley? Do you want to come up?
O'Malley, Rogers Road.
Come up to the spike, Mike, please, so our viewing public can hear you appropriately.
Being a dog owner for most of my life, we know that some dogs can be more aggressive than others. Who's going to suffer any liability should one dog attack another, and a dog owner goes to pull the dog off the other dog and bites a dog owner, and then we have this thing that just keeps going on? Who's going to suffer any liability?
You want to speak to that, Ms. Brown? You want to speak to that, Ms. Brown?
Oh, I can't. One of the, one of the things we have addressed in the registration is when a registrant signs up, one of the things they sign is they release, and tell me if I'm using the wrong term, but release of liability. So when you enter the dog park, you're entering it at your own risk, just like if you go onto a soccer field, you're playing at your own risk.
In addition, the township's insurance will provide coverage, but the incremental cost for that insurance will come out of the fund, so there's an economic no effect on the township for the additional insurance.
Anybody else? You can use that mic. Oh, you're headed there. Thank you.
Who absorbs the cost in case they don't raise the money in two years or three years for maintenance or four years? Who's going to pay? Does the park come apart, or is the township absorbing that maintenance?
It's a good question. I guess there's always the risk that the dog park will go defunct, but I, we've been assured that there are people lining up for registrations and that this is a great need for the community, and there will always be people using this dog park, and there will always be registration fees sufficient to pay for the, for the cost of operation.
Well, that's one of the reasons they have the fund, which they have to build up for the maintenance.
How big are they going to build it? How much is going to be the basis to start off with?
On how big?
Yeah, what's the basic amount that you need to maintain and operate this park?
For the first year, they're going to be, we're going to establish a fund at ten thousand dollars, and then quarterly after that, we're going to look at the amount that's going to require for maintenance and increase it up or down depending on.
Is registration once a year, every year?
Annual registration.
How much are you charging?
We're, it's not a definitive amount, but we're looking at forty dollars a year. And we anticipate minimum, minimal number of registrants to be five hundred.
Annually.
Annually. Other local dog parks, when they opened, they had to close their registration at eight hundred. So, if you do the math right there, we will have a
Substantial.
A substantial maintenance fund to keep this going.
And that will continue annually.
Yes.
Fill up that pot.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions? Any questions from the board? Calling the question on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Rarely do we get applause, so thank you very much. Back to the, wait, we have one more presentation on the agenda. Mr. O'Malley? Don't touch anything.
You can close it.
You can close the lid.
More of a critique than a presentation. On October twenty-fourth, the planning commission held an open meeting regarding the York Swamp Rogers Road development held at Lenape. Many of, well, several of board members, representatives, staff members were not in attendance, so I thought I'd take the time to give you the resident's spin on what transpired. To call the meeting a dog and pony show would be grossly overstated. Close to one hundred residents were in attendance. The township, through its township manager, had advised the residents that the reviews were in and ready for disclosure to the public. The residents were ready and prepared even though we received only four days' notice. Everyone was not, was not as prepared as the residents. The applicant had his allotted sixty days-plus. The township, who knows how much time they had to do the reviews. But to us, everyone had adequate time, both the applicant and the township, but they were poorly prepared. The applicant did not have his traffic engineer present and not in attendance from the township or the chair to the planning commission, the township engineer, and the traffic engineers. The residents wanted to know about stormwater management, woodlands, buffers, the cell phone tower, and traffic management. All we got were bits and pieces. Even the planner, who was running the meeting more or less, admitted that she was not qualified to answer many of the residents' questions. How do we let important staff members not be in attendance during critical issues like the Grasso project? This has been an ongoing thing. Should they not be compelled to attend meetings like this? Taxpayers spend huge tax dollars for these people to render opinions at meetings like this. In the future, I suggest that if they don't attend, that the township back-charge the firms they work for. But this should not be surprising, as in my opinion, this township and some of its staff are guilty of a pattern of bad behavior. During this entire Grasso soap opera, the residents have had to suffer through being told no meetings were being held between the applicant and the township, when indeed at a later date, the township admitted to such meetings. Mr. Garten, after Mrs. Lyons asked that Rogers Road residents be represented at discussions between the township and applicant, stated all discussions would be held in the township building here. This also was a false statement. The applicant admitted to having ten months of meetings with staff members. This even after Mrs. Lyons stated there would be no discussions with the applicant while litigation was going on. During the last meeting, Mrs., board of supervisors meeting, Mrs. Mason stated twice, no meetings, no recent meetings had taken place between the applicant and the township, but the applicant at the Lenape meeting admitted, along with the township planner, that recent meetings indeed had taken place. Who is minding the store here? How many non-truths do we have to listen to? How much frustration should a neighborhood have to endure? Additional bad behavior, and with no respect to anyone's religious affiliation. When Temple Judea was seeking township approval for its facility, the congregants filled the rooms here and at Lenape. In their new facility, they would, will have a nursery school, daycare, and a religious school, and all that goes with the house of worship. If Mr. Grasso, if approved, will put traffic, additional traffic on Rogers Road, traffic that includes a variety of trucks. If anyone has traveled Rogers Road, you know the poor sightlines and the narrowness of the road, this causing a serious and dangerous situation. With that, wouldn't you think that in the best interest of its congregants and children, that the temple would have had representation at the Grasso meeting? Wouldn't you think safety of the congregants would have been paramount, yet there were no representation? I find that suspect. As stated previously, very little in concrete information was presented at the Lenape meeting, but how would if the temple had known that? Not attending was not because of being not interested, it was because someone in the building here made the temple aware that the meeting was not relative to them. Or has a deal already been struck between the township, the developer, and the temple regarding the traffic light? Now, tell me, the applicant got his process, his due process, using his allotted time, the township did their reviews, inadequate time to rebut, and the temple was afforded inside information, but the residents were only granted four days and denied an extension, an extension that the developer told me he would be more than happy to extend. All he needed was to be asked. I call this bias and discriminatory against the people who this garbage affects the most, the residents. The bias and the lies have to stop. I'm a traffic guy. I'm here fighting for the safety, health, and welfare of my people and the people who drive through our neighborhood. Last week, Doylestown Township Police presented this traffic study to the Traffic Advisory Committee that I'm a member of, and astonishingly, though Rogers Road is not one of the most heavily-traveled roads in the community, it is one of the most dangerous. And the board cannot ignore this any longer. You ignored it during the Temple Judea process, and it can't be ignored anymore. I presented my opinions to the Central Buff School Board. I intend presenting my concerns to them at their next meeting. Children's safety is a real concern. Buses and trucks and SUVs are unable to navigate the head of that road, and someone has to stand up and realize that. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Moving on to the regular agenda.
Hello. Ellen Ekman from Colonial Heritage. We were watching, and we saw that you postponed our meeting, and that's going to be a problem for residents. Many people took off. We have people from New Britain Borough coming, and it would be hard for us to get a hold of all of them, plus we have New Britain Township coming. I think it was very unfair to allow Mr. Kilpatrick to manipulate and change our meeting, and I would like that changed back to when it's supposed to be. It's not, that wouldn't be for the residents, that would be for the company. They've had eight years to deal with this, and I don't think four more days or whatever is going to make much difference.
Why you called the meeting?
Yeah, we were surprised at the four days, too, but we dealt with it, and I'm sure they can. And I just think it's, this wasn't for the residents. I was home thinking, what are you doing? What are you doing to us?
Well, it is for the residents, because if we're going to try and get some resolution and get all this, all these issues out, it's best that they be there. Now, they couldn't be there. You heard the conversation, and they took the responsibility of notifying everybody, so that's what they're going to do.
Yeah, but we have more people coming than they could, they're going to notify just our community.
Well, they're going to have to notify everybody. They're going to have to notify everybody in New Britain Township and New Britain Borough, too, and you can help notify them as well. We didn't send notice to New Britain Borough and New Britain Township, but I know if
New Britain Borough was included.
Okay. And their resident, and their representatives will be coming, so I'm sure that since you
I mean, everything was in place.
I know, Ms. Ekman.
I just don't understand why.
I know.
And I think I would just like to go with it, because there's wells possibly being contaminated, and we'd like to see this issue looked into. I mean, we have people coming that can tell people that their wells have been contaminated because of our oil issues, and I think that's more important.
I think it's best that we get the facts. I don't know who's telling you these things, but I think we need to get the facts, and I want to hear them from the people who are taking the samples, and we want, we want the owners and representatives there to hear as well. So, let's do it when everyone can be in the same room, let's get all the facts out with everybody who's there to listen and address them. And unfortunately, for whatever reason, they can't be here, but they took the responsibility of notifying everybody, and I think it might be in the end, and I think the board agrees with me, a more productive meeting if we can all be in the same room. Thank you. I'm sorry that it's going to be an inconvenience.
It's going to be.
Sir?
I'm Gerald Wall. I'm president of Temple Judea. I just wanted to state for the record that the way I find out about these planning commission meetings is the office emails me a copy of the letter that's sent to our office. So we find out at the same time, we have the same interests as all the other residents of the township. The safety of our children is paramount, and all our congregants, and we look forward to serving the community, but there is no insider information that comes my way, and you know, I'm usually the go-to person, you know, from the leadership side for our temple. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next meeting of this board is Tuesday, December sixth. We canceled the meeting of the Colonial Heritage for December seventeenth, new date to follow. We're going to be closed on Thursday, December twenty-fourth, and Friday, December twenty-fifth for Thanksgiving. Yard and leafs waste, leaf and yard waste recycling is December tenth at Central Park, Doylestown residents only, township residents only, and the Doylestown Food Pantry is in desperate need of supplies, food. We made a copy of donations for the Doylestown Food Pantry. Please pick one up on the, on the table. The unique thing about this donation is that if you've got lab equipment, stereos, laptops, laptop batteries, microwave ovens, all kinds of computer equipment that you've been trying to get rid of, those old Atari games and so on, you can deliver them to AB Eight Waste Solutions. They will take them, they will take any money that they get for the recycling of those and donate it to the Doylestown Food Pantry. The deadline for this is, unfortunately, it's just this Friday, November eighteenth. We are going to be taking some collections here, so if you want to drop off stuff here by noon on Friday, we will make sure it gets to the place so we can get some credit to Doylestown Food Pantry, and like I said, they're in desperate need. Please help out whatever way you can. Minutes for approval of the budget work session on November fourth. There's a motion.
Move for approval.
Any questions, concerns, all in favor?
Just page three.
Okay.
Page three. Ms. Lyons commented that certainly cutting into the moral of the employees is a concern. It's morale.
Anything else?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, I was not available.
Work session meeting minutes for October twenty-first.
October twenty-first.
October twenty-first. Where are they?
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Work session meeting, I mean, sorry.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting of Doylestown, Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors, October eighteenth.
Move for approval.
Two seconds.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three and one abstention. We have to pass on the road inspection minutes for October sixth. We don't have, by the way, to correct the record, the vote for that road inspection in the last meeting was illegal, and we can't vote on it tonight because we're at a quorum on the vote. Reports from the solicitor.
Nothing to report, we won't discuss later in the agenda.
Lieutenant?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Township engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Manager?
Nothing at this time.
Not going to update Colonial Heritage. Cynthia, do you have anything?
No. Congratulations to the dog park.
Rick?
Just a comment that we talked about volunteers. There's openings on just about every board and commission, and all year long, we solicit for volunteers, so if anyone out there wants to donate some of their time, it's a great, great opportunity to help out in the community. Just contact Stephanie, and we'll get you on board commission if you like.
There'll be interviews for such boards and commissions, and we'll be holding them in January, not before. Tom?
Yeah, I just want to say, I want to thank our road crew for doing a great job during these several big storms that we've had in the past month or so, and as we always do, we have an exceptional group of people who work tirelessly over time, et cetera, et cetera, to make sure that our roads are maintained safely for our residents to run on, and just want to thank them again. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, next item on the agenda is a public hearing of proposed ordinance for the outdoor furnaces.
Yes, this was put together, and the hearing's actually going to be on the sixth. It was advertised today, but the last time the board talked about it was July, and Judy can't be here on the sixth, so I thought she could give you just a real brief overview of the proposed ordinance so that when you have the hearing, you can be better informed on it.
So the hearing will not be on the sixth?
No, it's scheduled for the sixth right now, but Judy won't be able to be here then, so I thought we can do that.
Okay, we don't have to have it on the sixth.
No, you can make, if you decide a later, a later time, you can table it.
Rather you be here. Why don't we just table it then?
Do you want to table it?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to move it to the twentieth?
Can you make the
What day are you available?
Let me just double check. I didn't know that one off the top of my head. Twenty-five, she's on my calendar, forget.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Thank you. All right, so there's a motion to table?
Yes.
All in agreement?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, gentlemen.
Oh, okay.
All right. The next item on the agenda is presentation of the budget. First, the approval of the 2011 revised budget. That's been provided for us in our packet.
Yes. Cynthia wants to-- Mm-hmm. 2011 budget with 10.25 mils. Revenues of $10,417,453. Expenses of $10,277,394. And fund balance of $4,455,666,000.
That's $4,454,455.
Right. When the number revised. You found another dollar.
Oh, there's another dollar.
This is updated as of this afternoon from our finance department.
Is there a motion to approve the revised budget?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve? I guess to hang it.
No, this is for the revised. This is revised--
Okay, I'm sorry. Revised budget. I'll make a motion. And I have to make a -- this is without any tax increase to the residents of Doylestown Township.
Tom, this is the-- I don't know, Tom. This is last year's budget. The one you voted against.
What we're going for here.
What we're approving here right now is the revised budget for 2011.
Yes, that's correct.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the preliminary budget for 2012. Okay?
Give me a second.
Is there a second for the approval of the revised budget?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve preliminarily the budget prepared for 2012.
That's correct.
I make a motion. We approve that.
Is there a second for discussion purposes?
I'll second.
All right, Stephanie?
Thank you. The 2012 budget has been prepared with no tax increase. Milage will remain at 10.25. Revenues will be $10,843,029. Expenses, $10,683,592, with a fund balance of $3,876,781. Again, some of the highlights from the budget include no real estate tax increase for 2012, no staff or service cuts. The township selected a pension smoothing option for the MMO of 2012. We're offset that by state aid at $226,439. A zero wage increase is incorporated into the budget for non-uniform. We have left something there for the police in case our arbitration, which was unknown at this time, comes back. There will be a reduction in the medical plan costs, saving township $65,000. Employee contributions will continue to the pension at 5% and contributions to medical at 1%. Reallocation of the millage from the debt service, 1.25 mils has been moved from the general fund. Total debt service for 2012 is $706,970. Debt service millage rate is .75 in 2011 to 2 mils in 2012. Capital expenditures to be paid with existing reserves, loan balances and transfers from the general fund. Total expenditures for 2012 is $877,603, down from 2011 budgeted figures of 1.3. Obviously implications for beyond 2012. We will need to continue to look at our capital expenditures, funding for 2013 and 14, and examine the tax millage allocations each year.
I would add, this is a preliminary budget only, so it's advertised and available for public review, and the Board will be adopting a final budget before the end of the calendar year. But they cannot change the preliminary budget by more than 25% in the aggregate or 10% in any major line item. So there are restrictions, but this is not the final budget, so that there may be other tweaking that may occur.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion. We approve. This is what we call hanging the budget. Am I correct?
Correct.
I was ahead of myself from 2011 to 2012 when I spoke last time. I apologize, but I think this is a very durable budget we're presenting at this time.
I have a question, please.
Yeah. Please, right there.
Could you please repeat the revenue and the expense number if you should close your mouth? Your budget? That was?
All funds.
That's revenue?
That's revenue.
Okay.
And expenses of $10,683,592.
It's substantially higher revenue than the latest illustration I had from two days ago.
Ken gave me this this morning, so--
I'll check with him.
All right. There's a motion, a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Well, okay. All in favor of hanging the budget?
I have some discussion before we do that. I will vote--
Withdrawing the question. Go ahead.
I will vote to hang the budget, but only on one condition. I just think it's a disgrace that the township, we as supervisors, are not going to give our employees some type of a cost of living. As we heard Tom talk about our road crew, and he said that they are an exceptional group of people who do exceptional work. They go above and beyond their call of duty for different things, and he wants to thank them for all that they do. You know, having 0% in there is just rude, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, in this day and age, there are a lot of people will complain to you that everybody should be doing something for nothing. And if you -- I don't agree with that. And I think it's absolutely wrong. And if you believe that the services that we get here in the township are good services, if you like, you know, the staff that's in here in the office that does something good for you, that helps you with a question, or if the road crew comes out and takes care of something, or the fact that maybe you've never even seen any of the staff or the road crew, but you know that that tree has been moved when we have a storm, or your roads are plowed. You know, the police, we put a percentage in there for the police contract of having some type of an increase, but nothing for the non-uniformed employees. I don't think that that's right. And so I'm proposing a compromise. And this is a compromise that was kind of put forth by Jim Bingler, and it looks like Joe Paternostro was also leaning towards that. And I don't want to put words in either of their mouths, so I'll just use my own. But what I would like to do is I would like to request that the supervisors that are getting health insurance go back to just straight salary. So supervisors will only be paid a salary, and then the monies that are saved from the health insurance costs go towards giving the employees a cost of living raise. And if you do that, then I'm willing to vote to hang this budget. I think that would be a great compromise. It's not a cost. It's something, you know, we show that we've got, you know, good employees. We want to keep them and not give them a 0%. So that's the compromise that I'm requesting. I don't know what my fellow supervisors feel about that, but I think--
Since my name was mentioned in vain there, I'd like to speak out. Yes, I did say this year, we should not give our employees an increase. They're great people, work hard. A lot of places are laying off. A lot of places are cutting back on employment. And I'm talking municipalities. Yes, Merck and a lot of big companies around are laying off and cutting back on salaries. Even the intelligentsor cut their employees' salary. And what I'm saying, Social Security hadn't had an increase in three years. And last year, we gave our wonderful employees what, a 3.25 increase in salary?
We gave a 3%.
Which was a difficult time at that time, and we did it anyway because we had a tax increase, et cetera, et cetera. But I'm saying there's times that we have to really hunker down, I've used that before, and make sure that we stay healthy, keep a fund balance for a rainy day fund, et cetera, et cetera. But I just think that our employees, we're not laying anybody off. We're keeping everybody working. We're keeping them at least at their salaries that they had last year. And I think this is something we have to do. And that's how I feel.
Well, that's why I think that this is so brilliant, Tom, because we're not asking for anybody here to give up something. It's us here. It's you giving up your health insurance--
Last year, I gave up my salary.
Well, I'm suggesting that we go back to just strictly salary.
We gave up our salaries, and, you know, it was something that we did to try to balance the budget. And so it's not like we haven't done anything. It's -- we have.
Well, Tom, this is doing more so that we can give our employees a small cost of living.
Well, that's very nice. And it'd be nice if we had the ability to do that.
You do have the ability. You can say yes.
All right. We're not going to argue about this. You made your point. If there's any further discussion on it, we'll hear it. Constructive discussion. If not, I'm going to call a question on the budget motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there -- I don't know if that's a question or a-- I'm going to call a question, Gerald, and then you can comment. Calling a question on the hanging the budget. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three in one. Just Paternostro.
I'm getting up here too much. As much as I hate to agree with Mrs. Filo, I like to see you guys give up the insurance. I'm against giving the non-uniform people a pay raise. I wouldn't mind giving it to the police, the cops, for New York terms, only because they're the guys carrying the gun, and they're the guys protecting us. But given the $75,000 or whatever it is for the insurance, I'm not against that at all.
Moving on with the agenda. We need to examine resolutions for FEMA relief contributions. We are the lead municipality for Hurricane Lee and Hurricane Irene funding from FEMA, and as such, we have to authorize ourselves to be that funding and lead municipality for our residents in this community. Is there a motion to approve designation for Asian Revolution?
So moved.
For Irene?
Second.
Is there a motion to approve designation as Asian for Hurricane Lee?
So moved.
All in favor?
Oh, excuse me. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, we have two Eagle Scout proclamations, James Capelli, Troop Number 24, and Cole Rushworth, Troop 6. Is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, the street hierarchy.
Judy's here. Judy's here to do a presentation.
Judy Stern both times going to speak to that.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm here tonight to present the street hierarchy changes proposed to the subdivision land development ordinance, the zoning ordinance, and the comprehensive plan based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission for the last several years has been, actually, many years, more than several, many years, has been working to reclassify the streets to a new hierarchy. They've worked over time with the Traffic Advisory Committee also. There were a series of meetings, then it went over to the Traffic Group for a while, then it came back to Planning Commission. There was some disagreement. I think in the end, there was much more agreement than disagreement, and I think that what I'm going to present to you was the culmination of many years' worth of work. Essentially, the crux of it is, although there's a lot of little mini amendments to make it all work, the crux is changing the street hierarchy from the current hierarchy of arterials, collectors, sub-collectors, and residential access, or local streets, to a new criteria of regional arterials, community arterials, community collectors, neighborhood collectors, and then local roads. It's added that extra criteria of neighborhood collectors in, because we do have streets in this township that function as neighborhood collectors that channel the traffic from neighborhoods into certain roads that then go on to the other larger collectors that get then to the community arterials and the regional arterials. We needed to recognize that additional level of streets. So if I take you through the memo that was written, I think you all have it in your package, in your packet. The first group are some zoning ordinance amendments, and that's just to make the language consistent. It's consistency to get the new hierarchy throughout. The subdivision land development also is substantially consistency to get the new language throughout through the plan requirements. And then it does change some of the street and road standards. It adds the sidewalks, multi-use trails, and the pedestrian slash bike trails in. Instead of always having sidewalks in for the larger roads, it adds the other options of multi-use trails and pedestrian slash bike trails. So you're not always getting a sidewalk, you're getting what's appropriate for the type of road. It also changes some of the road width requirements to make them consistent with what the changes have been proposed. Adds some definitions of the newer terms in. And then finally, there's an amendment, a draft amendment resolution to the comprehensive plan because the street hierarchy is currently in the comprehensive plan. That in a nutshell is what it is. And it's all written in a form so that if you would so desire, you could authorize your solicitor then to prepare it for advertising.
Is there a motion to advertise?
So moved.
Second.
Just so you guys get a flavor of the hierarchy. A regional arterial would be like the 611 bypass, Route 202 Parkway. Community arterial would be like Northeastern Road, Southeastern Road, Swamp Road, Route 313. Community collector would be something along the lines of Ferry Road, Limekill, Lower State Road, Cherry Lane--
It's not on that.
--East Road. Just giving some examples. Spring Valley. Neighborhood collector would along the line of Meeting House Road, New Britton Road, Old Nude Road, Rogers Roads, Sowerman Roads. And then that would be, that's the hierarchy. The neighborhood is the most secured in the upper, or the least traveled in the upper one is the most traveled. Okay, there's a motion of a second. All in favor of the motion to advertise?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
So we will ice control bid.
We have a memo from Mr. John recommending that we award to the bidders that have come in, which include Hartman, Puppy Dog, Vigil. And this is within the 2012 estimated budget at this time. And having already experienced a storm, we know the importance of having them available.
Is there a motion to approve the--
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just for the record, Puppy Dog Landscape has no relation to Doylestown Dog Park. Okay. Zoning Hearing Board application at Tabi Tabi.
Tabi Tabi. We're going to leave that to the zoning hearing board.
And Temple Judea Development ESCRO agreements. Do we have them?
Yes, they were prepared, consistent with the land development approvals granted by the Board some time ago, and it reflect the conditions of preliminary and final plan approval.
Oh, okay.
You have to vote on that?
Yeah, you do.
Sign it.
Okay. Move for approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Treasurers' report.
Mr. Bingler had a question.
Do you come to take this stand, please?
Undo. Are the questions done, I guess?
No. Motion carried.
Jeff, I believe that it was never determined whether or not you're going to take the road frontage, whether or not--
by the payment of cash or the inclusion of the road.
Okay, so you went by a dollar figure for curbing gutter, widening?
Never, we never came to a conclusion, because it's still open by this agreement.